So welcome to the Wednesday, November 7th, 2018 meeting of the Amherst Planning Board. So I know that we have a public hearing tonight, so we'll get to that right at 7:05. So, um, which is in just two minutes. So the short business is approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
Do you have the impact?
Yes. So we... On that. I do have a C.
I'm with Shane.
Yeah, yeah, two Cs.
We're okay.
H.
H three.
Okay.
H three. And here, so C A T H Y and S C H O N.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, extensions. So...
Mike and Jack and Steve?
Yeah.
And who, who moved?
President.
And who seconded?
Steve, I forgot his motion.
You seconded.
Yeah, that's, that's it, yeah. So it is 7:05, so I don't have a... We am... Oh, how about if I just we at this one?
Just we.
Yeah. So, in accordance with, maybe we have a number?
Well, you can just say in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40.
Yeah, in accordance with, you'd think I would know this, but in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15C, Scenic Roads, we are heading up a public hearing regarding a proposed scenic wall removal at 294 Leverett Road. So this meeting has been duly advertised in all the usual places. And normally what we do is we have the applicant give the pro, talk about what's happening first, then we'll talk about the site visit, then we'll have planning board discussions, then we'll open a public hearing. So...
So we are the new owners, Mike and I, Alison Saylor, and this is Mike Saylor. The new owners of 294 and 304 Leverett Road. They're two cottages that are next to each other on separate lots, but they're co-joined by sharing a well and other issues, so that we kind of had to buy them both. And there's one driveway that was put in by the seller for 304, and we're requesting that we put in a driveway for 294 for that cottage. It's where the trailhead is, that's just, if you have a map in front of you. 294 has a trailhead, and then the proposal is to, there's a little gap between the sugar macals, and we can squeeze in a nice little driveway that'll head towards the cottage. It'll look very much like the one that was done for 304. We're ready to hire the same person to put in the driveway. Pretty simple. I don't know what was done with the other stones for 304's driveway, but I do know that I plan on being right there when they do the work, and I will move the stones and just 3D effect fill out the existing stone wall to be chunkier and a little square in places. So it's not going to go anywhere, it'll just be distributed to the left and to the right of where it is.
Nice. So there was a site visit to, where was the site visit?
Loed today.
Was today? So there was a site visit, and I, who was there? I'm from the, raise your hand if you were. So Rob?
And David.
David and Matt. So would one of you want to give a report on the site visit?
There's no written word.
No written, no word?
Well, sure, I'll, I'll discuss it. We were, we saw where the wall, where the wall obviously is, and the area that is proposed to be removed directly off the main road, off the road, between two existing standing trees on either side which will not be moved. It's, there's a very steep drop-off from the road level to the flat area where the cottage sits. So there'll be a little, a grade issue there, which is not within our jurisdiction, I don't think, but it, it's clear that a significant amount of stonework would be moved from the 15-foot cut, which is proposed, to either side of it. I'm not quite sure where the applicant is proposing to put the stones, but I'm presumably on either side of where the cut would be. And that would result in a, an interruption of the, of a running stone wall, which goes for hundreds of yards, I don't know how far exactly, with several interruptions already in it.
Anything else on the site visit? Any discussion from the planning board?
Uh, yeah, I, I, we're talking about general discussion or?
Yeah, there was, there was.
Okay. As I, as I read the scenic road bylaw, the purpose of the bylaw is to protect the character of historic local roads by preventing the removal of key features, stone walls. And it seems to me that there is no, in the bylaws, I can find no way in which we can approve this, because we are charged with protecting the character of local historic roads. And the removal of this, of this 15 feet of historic stone walls would clearly change the character of that road. Now, the character of that road has been changed previously by the removal of other stone walls, a few other actions, presumably of this body, although I don't know to the, for sure. But it seems to me that we should not approve this, because the only valuable purpose served is that of the individual property owners, and it does not correspond with the way the law seems to be written.
I have a question.
Look, sure, you can go ahead and respond at the time.
I, I was under the understanding that every lot has the right to have a driveway in it, and we don't have a driveway. And the previous owners of the cottage would use a different way to get in, and we are going to use it as just one person living there, so we need a driveway there.
Possibly see the site, I don't have a site.
Sure.
But so this is a property we've been to a number of times, or properties we've been to a number of times. So let's, let's go with Christine.
I just want to ask a question, but I'm familiar with the stone wall across the street. There's a bunch of homes that were built about 15 years ago, and I know the owners of those homes actually had the stone walls put in on the front of their property, so within the last 15 years. Do we know the history of this previous, because it was the picture of property, whatever. Did he build this wall, or is it an old wall?
It's been a long time. The one right here?
Yeah, like, was it built with the property? Because parts of it have a fence on it and...
I don't know the answer.
We don't know.
Just to me, that is a diff, you know, is it a hundred, 200-year-old historic wall? Or is this a wall that was built 20 years ago, just, you know, as an aesthetic thing? That now we're holding to, you know?
We know it's been changed, because the last time we did a site visit on one of these properties, whoever it was that works for the Kittredge family talked about how he'd throw stones on, and he would actually add to the wall rather.
Exactly.
So we had the joke about, do you need to give a permit to add to a scenic wall? So it's, you know, most walls like this change over time, you know? In other words, walking the wall is all about putting stones back into the stone wall, so...
I have a stone wall on a different property.
Yep.
And I don't see evidence that this is a very old one. It's kind of angular, and it doesn't have very much moss and things growing on it. So if somebody was to say, you know, "Do you know how old it is?", I'd say, "No." Would I guess? I'd say, "Quite new." No, not, not an ancient one. It's, it looks like it's been built relatively recently, in my opinion.
I, I would take the opposite opinion. It seems to me to be, and I'm not being an expert on stone walls, but it appears to be so randomly arranged that it is clearly, to me, an example of a wall that was originally built firmly and has kind of eroded over time into the kind of soft profile as opposed to a hard edge profile of a stone wall of that sort would have been if it would have been built, you know, if we were in the 19th century. But this is clearly a question that we can't decide without archaeological evidence of some kind.
But that, and that's not to say even a criterion is how old the wall is. It's really, it's contribution to the scenic character. You raise your hand up.
Yeah.
You're going to be the tiebreaker?
No, I, I, maybe, I, I don't, I doubt it. So I, I sympathize with a lot leaving its stone driveway, that makes sense to me. But I also agree that, what is the point of having a scenic roads bylaw? We're, we're not going to pay any attention to it. This, this has nothing to do with it. We, this, as Steve said, this is the third time that we've had to, on this short stretch of, of road, make a decision about changing the character of, of the road. And, and in each, the first two times, I think the board allowed the change to be made, and I think it degraded the scenic quality of the road. And so, has it degraded now so much that, that it's lost? And it doesn't matter if further change is made, I don't know. I, I just, I just, I, I find the scenic roads quite extreme, quite problematic and difficult to... I, I think it's important, but it, but it doesn't really work. And I want to make one more comment about, so this is separate from decision about changing the wall now. The, the easement for the conservation trail, the trailhead, I noticed when we passed, the wall was right up on the, on the north side of that parking area. The wall was right up to the next stop. On the other side, on the south side of the parking lot, the wall, there's a wall that actually curves around or defines the corner of the, of the driveway. And so I would suggest possibly as a compromise, maybe, that, that the, that the part of the wall is removed, be moved over to, to define the north side of the, of the driveway, of the parking area, of that driveway, maybe. So that, so that it looks more like it's, it helps, it helps repurpose the wall in a, in a better way.
Could I ask for some clarification on that? I think I may understand what you're saying, but there's, on the southmost side, side most towards Amherst Center, it starts, then there's a little bit of the wall, then there's the trailhead. And then are you saying, put more stones between there and where this new one is, which is like 10 feet or something?
Um, so, because I, my, when, when we passed by, it looked like the wall on the south side made like a right turn into the, into the driveway, into the parking lot.
It goes down the lot line.
A little bit, yeah.
Yes.
But on, on your side of it, or the north side of it, there isn't on, there isn't a perpendicular wall to the road. It's just parallel to the road. So I'm saying, take, take the park from your driveway and, and make it perpendicular.
When you say "our" side, are you saying next to the green fence? Because all that property is ours.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Not next to the green fence, but, but towards the fence. There's, there's a little bit of a section there that doesn't have the stone.
Board, but, okay. I just need to know if we're moving them, where we're putting them, so that we follow what you want. I will say that the trailhead is, again, as someone mentioned over here, it's very sharp and deep, so there's a lot of grading issues. So unless you're telling me exactly where it goes, I don't know even if it's that feasible to just take some and put them somewhere, because it goes like this through the poison ivy.
And it's really just a question, right, or a comment? Yeah, so we don't?
Same as you.
Yeah.
I could make a comment to the general question of, you know, what's the purpose of the scenic road. It is preventing us from taking 300 feet of stone wall away. We own 150 feet on one lot, 150 feet on another lot. So we're asking to take 15 feet away, not 300. So the scenic road does have a purpose.
And you're supposed to do what you're trying to do, which is tell us what to do with the rocks when we move them. And I'm fine with that, because I want it to look pretty too.
Let's hear what Christine has to say.
So, I mean, we're talking about, it's a scenic road, and it's a pretty stone wall. And we have, also on scenic roads, we have trees. And we come, and we, they very often have to cut limbs off trees and scenic highways because of why, power wires and, you know, and so you're like trimming the tree, but the tree is still there, and as you drive, you're like, oh, there's still a pretty tree there. So to me, I'm like, they're just cutting a driveway in a long run of road. The wall is still there, it's still pretty. So I guess what we're saying is like, how much does it depreciate the scenicness that there's 15 feet of a break in the wall? I mean, these stone walls, farmers have used them for hundreds of years, and they put breaks in them all the time, because they got to get the cattle in them now, or whatever they were using it for. So I think, it's not that we're removing a whole beautiful scenic thing, we're just sort of trimming it. That's sort of how I, you know?
So I think everyone's right. Because I think that, in other words, what's the point of us having this if it's, if we're not protecting it? But then you also bring up the point that it's, that runs in conflict with basically A and R, you know, or it's the right to have a wa, um, in Massachusetts, if you have the frontage and it's a public way, you have a right to make that a billable lot. Saying you have a right to access to that lot. So to me, it's the A and R law that runs in conflict with the scenic road law. So, you know, if, I mean, I guess there ought to be something in the scenic road law that says you no longer have A and R, that's not your problem, but this is me just talking out loud. Then if there's a scenic road that we're trying to protect, then there ought to be some sort of a exception to the A and R to also protect it. But to me, the A and R approval not required is more, and I'm not talking about you guys, I'm just talking about generally, is more of a threat to scenic roads than removal of 15 feet of, of stone wall. But I'm sorry, someone had their...
Yeah, I kind of go back to what Mr. Brown said earlier, about the minimum about the whole, the law itself. But nonetheless, the law says what it says.
Yep.
And if we're charged with implementing law, as we are by Massachusetts, by law and by the Amherst bylaw, it's our responsibility to protect the scenic highway.
Yep.
And I suggest that, that there is a driveway to these two properties. They are together, they are apparently bound together. If there's only one water supply for the two of them, they're not going to be separable as a result of what the owners were saying. So that there's no reason why that second cottage, for which this stone wall break is being proposed, can't be served by the existing driveway, which comes directly into the, the under ground. I understand that there, there are two separate tenants and, but there's one owner. And it exists, and it's apparently usable at this point. And I don't think it's depriving the owner necessarily of the right to access to the other property.
Were you removing trees or just stone walls?
There are no trees on that one. I talked to the tree board, and, and trees that are in his jurisdiction or their jurisdiction are on the other side of the wall. And that side of the wall is, it's got some peonies and some other plantings, but no trees. And it turns out where we're projecting to have the cut through, there are no trees. So right, to the right and left of it, there's trees, but nothing to be removed.
And I'd just like to respond a little bit to the common driveway thing. We are trying to make these be separate lots, so that...
In the future.
In the future, they can be sold separately.
We've already put, we have, we have, the seller had to put paint tanks that were shared, that has been separated in the future.
The well can be moved if it needs to.
We're going to do a new well, we are going to over time separate them.
Yes. This is part of the steps of separating them.
Maybe to, to go ahead. My, my reading of the law is that once the road has been designated as a scenic road, then if there are any of these sorts of changes, trees, stone walls, before anything can be done, it has to get approved by, by the appropriate body. I'm not quite sure, I mean, the town meeting designated this road in 1974. Lots of things have changed, we described some of those changes. I think that today, that the owners of the, of the lot coming, requesting this, consistent with sort of the evolution and the development of the town, and the people living in various lots, it's not... I, I wouldn't, I, I would be reluctant to hold the scenic by, the scenic law up as then things cannot change on this road ever. That, this does not seem practical to me. And that this, if it undermines the value of the scenic, scenicness of this road, that'll be reflected in the owner's values, the owner, the value of the property itself. You know, if it's regrettable, to some would be regrettable to others, it wouldn't be... To my mind, our, the role of this, the board is, is they've come with a reasonable petition, cognizant of the impact aesthetically. If we have conditions to stipulate, that would be, that would be fine, I'm not quite sure. I don't, didn't see what Rob saw with the, with the trailhead, but that, but that barring real sort of destruction of the, the, the value of the aesthetic, I don't see that this proposal does, it should be approved. I would, I would, I would argue for approval.
Yeah, I agree with Attorney Levin saying. And I, I think the 15-foot section is, is dwarfed by the 300-foot section that, that would be preserved and remain untouched. From, from a scenic standpoint, I think we might as well focus on what's there, not, not what is missing.
Let me say it for me either, did you raise your hand up?
No, I just wanted to say that I would be in favor.
Well, there isn't a 300-foot section that is being retained. There are at least two breaks in the wall in that stretch already. It's, this is just one, this is one more break in what is already a broken stretch of many hundreds of yards of formerly solid stone wall. So it's just one more break, or maybe justice is the wrong word. It is one more break in that series of, of broken stone walls, stone wall.
But we're not removing the rest of the stone walls.
Yeah.
And with that logic, we could propose, I guess, that we could block up the trailhead so that we can get the one that we really want as the owners. That would be...
Can you please talk to the, to, talk to the chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, say it again.
I'm just saying that with that logic of, there's now would be three breaks in our 300-foot stretch of, of road. We could block up the trailhead as one option. It's a silly option, I'm not really just seeing it, just being facetious here.
No, I understand, yeah.
But, you know, that was that logic, you could come up to some pretty silly recommendations. What I thought the scenic road thing was to put the good conditions on that makes it look good and not make it ugly. And I'd be happy to have conditions of where to put the stones, that's very reasonable.
But so it, it's also, and I'm going to step away beyond my profession, and I know that... But it's also true that if you have a driveway there now, giving access to both properties, you can have an easement. So an easement is a perfectly legitimate way of having two separate properties. Am I doing it, Attorney Levin?
No, I think that, that, that's another way to do it.
Yeah.
I, I, potentially not.
Yeah, so in other words, that's very common, that you have to cross another property to get to your property as long as there's an easement, so...
I wouldn't be able to deal with that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I want to make sure that we all understand that the purpose of the scenic road bylaw is not to make the road scenic, but to preserve its scenic qualities as they currently exist.
Interesting. What's the issue on the, on the, for the trailhead, is that?
Do you think that's a town access there? The town probably gained an easement token.
We wanted that happen.
There, there is no easement for the town.
Oh, there's no easement?
Yet. Yeah, it never completed.
Oh.
So it's effectively at our discretion whether it continues or not.
So you own the section that is now used as a parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
And the trail.
And the trail.
There's nothing, there's nothing on the deal.
Too great than, yes, too.
So absent any recommendation or condition from this group, what is the plan for placement of the stones to be removed?
I was going to just put them in different places on the existing wall to thicken it up and straighten it out, because it's a bit squishy. And I can certainly concentrate on the trailhead side if somebody puts that in as a condition. I'd be happy to do that. It'll probably be me doing it. The stones seem to be mostly people-sized, but if necess, if necessary, some big equipment could move some of the bigger ones that are underneath the big one off. I'll get it rolled into some strategically nice place. My, I'm a master gardener, so I actually love stone walls, and we'll make it look gorgeous.
Is it fair to say there are portions of the wall that could benefit from reinforcement?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, it's, it's a bit tumbled down in places. This will be good for the rest of the wall.
And Christine, did you raise your hand up?
Only that I noticed on the application, it says about, about 15 feet. And then when I looked at the map, it said 14 feet. And then I was thinking about, I know the building commissioner has on the set, because we've been plotting, we had our driveway. And I couldn't remember what the map, and what they, because there is a maximum that they allow you to put in for your curb, for your driveway. I didn't know if you knew that, Chris. I've been trying to look.
Well, I know the standard width for an individual driveway is 12 feet. And then when you get down towards the actual intersection with the road, I think you can have 24 feet, 24-foot wide opening when you're right at the road. With the driveway itself would be 12 feet.
Just wondering. Okay, but so then on the other part, was it does, it say 14 feet? I mean, is it, are you trying to go with the minimum that you need there?
No, I just measured the one that was already done and got approved by the planning board, so I said 14, and somebody changed it to 15.
I'm sorry.
I didn't do it. But 14 or 15, it'll be like the other one that's already cut through. And it does need a flare, I don't know what the technical term is, because otherwise you whack into it.
How do we move forward?
I'll move to approve the request for the condition of the stone to be repurposed to repair the existing sections of the wall on the owner's property.
Second? All right. Discussion?
I think repair may not, not be the right word, because where I believe the owner is planning to put the stones, I'm not entirely sure, is a place where the wall is in exactly the same condition as the wall is where it's going to be removed. So it would be to augment or something like that, but it's not going to repair it, because it's, it's the way, the curb, the wall currently is.
Well, my suggestion is based on the owner's statement that there are portions of the wall that would benefit from infill. If I could further clarify, repair means to infill those portions of the wall, which would benefit aesthetically from infill from the stones to be reused.
Well, which is, of course, is a matter of opinion.
Yep.
Because I would dispute that. The character of the wall is the way it is. Because I would dispute that, uh, the character of the wall is the way it is and, uh, should it be augmented?
I don't mind augmenting.
Augment, I'm happy to use, I'm happy to use your, your, okay. Augment if you think that can.
I don't think that's quite my cause. That's not my issue. I, I think the condition, as I, I'm sure this is gonna be approved, but, um, uh, the condition is a little unclear without, without that change. But that's, so thank you.
Okay, any more discussion?
Yeah. I wonder if Mr. Stone, I will critique the conditions.
Uh, that the stone to be removed, to be reused to augment other portions of the existing stone wall on the property?
I would actually use restore.
Restore.
Restore?
I'm happy.
Restore and augment? I don't understand what augmenting a wall would really mean in terms of.
He's building up wire, basically, or wire.
I think that.
This is, yeah. This is what, I think the, the, uh.
I think the goal is to use the stone in the wall to make the stone wall relatively more wall-like.
Which is why restore would be a better word than augment, but anyhow.
So do you think we'll substitute it?
I take it back.
I think you had to have been there.
I'd like to.
I, and I've been there twice and I wasn't able to make the trip today.
Remember, restore?
I'd like to run a restore.
Restore?
Who was the second to read it, man? You're right, perfect. Repeal and replace. Okay. Oh, right, all in favor, raise your hand.
Six, seven.
All opposed? Four, one, in absentia, one. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any paperwork or anything that needs to be given to contractors or anything?
This isn't written in stone until.
I can send you an email.
Okay, so we just.
We'll get it done quickly.
Thank you.
So I think I'm gonna move on to, I need for old business, because I think you're here for that. Page door four thirty four North Pleasant Street, Terry Gates, discussion about conditions. So this is SPR twenty seventeen zero 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 one three, and four oh two, oh two. So take it away.
Uh, there's, there's two things going on here, one is.
I have to introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm, okay. I'm Terry Gates, uh, I'm a member, I wear two hats, I'm a member of the church and I'm a member of Craig Storrs' board. And, uh, what the concern is here is shielding of some form, some parking lot that the university has at the back of the trailer area, which we do have two trailers in there which are used to bring food and the bottles that we turn in for, uh, for food, for the shelter and for the, uh, the, uh, food pantry that the church runs. And I agree that there is a snowplow set there that I used to call the church lot. And there are a couple of storage units that the church uses, uh, the shelter, uh, itself. When the original permit was given two years ago to change the trailer from feeding people to, used to play in office and resource center. So there, there are two things here, the, the church property, uh, and the trailer which the permit was given on to Craig Storrs to change it to an office and, and resource center. I have met, uh, because the church needs to expand, it's, it's very, very crowded. And I have met a number of times with John Kennedy, Vice Chancellor, and he has not ever mentioned to me in a way, the condition that, that exists there. Although, uh, I think it's more a church property problem than, than probably Craig Storrs' problem. Craig Storrs does own the trailer. And, uh, this afternoon, after we left, I did meet with the, uh, the executive director of Craig Storrs' shelter and with the, uh, some of the people that, uh, that run that shelter underneath it, the executive director. And they're very, were a very strong way against the fence because they felt people could hide in there and they can't see them. Police do, uh, not that we have a lot of problems, but the police do come in every night. And, and they circle the area, both the university police and the, the church sets on amorous jurisdiction, so the, uh, amorous police do come in, uh, they know all the shelter people and, uh, there's a presence there. The concern of the people that are operating the shelter is, this creates a hiding place for, for many of the, or could concern, a hiding place for the people. And I think when we had the site visit, it started out with maybe a tree, uh, I forget your name, but, uh, one tree. I have no problem, I like the tree idea better, it kind of breaks things up. But I, I think more like six trees that would be planted there. And, and I think then that gives a vision for the, the police to see through and for us to see through. Uh, because the, the shelter resource center is open at times at its start. So that's, I guess that's the position, nobody had a problem today with the shelter inside with the office setup that they're using that you granted before. And one of them is, the, the problem here is screening. And, uh, uh, we would be willing, from the church, anyway, my church hat now, uh, is to put some, uh, uh, trees in there and, uh, keep them trimmed to, uh, uh, a scenic position. Although there's some big pines in there already. So that would be the position, I guess, that, uh, that I would present to you for thought.
So, um, at the site visit, um, there were three members of the board who were there and they did talk about, um, putting up a stockade fence. And I took the liberty of just sketching where that would go and, um, you know, getting a picture of a stockade fence. So I think, you know, you might wanna just look at it so you understand the whole conversation.
Do they have it in their package?
No, they don't, I, I just made one copy when I gave it to you and so I just wanna pass it around. So you can just pass it around and see what the, you know, board members who are on site talked about and then, um, I'll get a better understanding.
Go ahead, Bob. So, um, site visitor, you're fine?
Yes, please.
The, we originally talked about this a year or two ago, uh, because there was a lot of stuff in the store for hiding the trail. That's, most of that has been cleaned up, um, it's much more tidy than it was before, but it still does look like the back of, 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 you know, the back storage area of some, of somewhere. So it's, it, it did seem like it was, uh, something that could, um, screen it a little bit, you know, present a nicer, um, front to, to the university. And I, 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 I prefer bushes or small trees to a fence I did this afternoon. I think that would be better. And I don't think it needs to be six trees, I think, I think one or two bushes would, would do the trick, but, you know, whatever you come up with. So, so for me, for me, the issue is when you stand, um, in, in UMass parking lot, which is, you know, thirty yards away from the trail. At least my eye was drawn to the, to these, um, tiny yellow buckets or whatever they were at the, at the snowplow. If there were a bush there or a tree there, I think your eye would be stopped by that and it would go off necessarily to, to the other stuff. And so that's, that's, I just want something to draw my eye, rather than having the snowplow on my eyes. That's, that's hard. Good luck.
Anyone, that's Christine?
Um, I was at the site visit, the only comment I'll have is that behind the trailer, it looks like a shopyard. It looks, you know, like a little, any kind of DPW thing kind of going on, there's a couple of trailers and a golf cart, there's all these like, you know, equipment and there's sheds. And it's not attractive looking, it looks like they're doing work and it's good work that they're doing, but I don't, I think where they are exposed, I think if they had a fence, then they could just get on with their good work and they wouldn't have to worry about the mess they're making or if another golf cart showed up or whatever, um, and they could just keep it tidy. In regards to safety, we're not talking about a full enclosure, we're just talking about an L, um, that runs part of the property line, not the whole property line. And I will ask, um, if there is lighting on the back of the trailer and if there is lighting, is it motion sensor? Because that's what I would suggest if you were worried about having people congregating or hanging out there.
Can you go ahead and respond to that?
The, uh, there are two, two lights on the back, the downlights, that was requested by the, uh, planning board originally. They don't flood the whole area, it's a downlight. They're not motion, they're, they're on all the time. The, from my position, the, uh, once the fence is up, I think the executive director and the people that, that are actually in the shelter working with the homeless people, uh, is that once they enter that area, it's blocked off. They have to come back out of that area again and that's what they're concerned about. We had that problem between Gordon Hall, the, the building was built on the south side of the church. And the problem was they would travel up through there and, uh, and leaving things in bushes. If we weren't paying attention, they'd, they'd be sleeping in the corner, it's very hard to see them. Uh, so we've changed that and put a, a fence up there, uh, but that's a different kind of fence. It's mainly, keeps them from traveling through. Uh, this fence would also keep them from traveling through and that's one of the concerns that, that the staff had. Now, we could do, we could take all the pails you saw set in there, or, or, uh, remove all of those. The two trailers operate to bring cans and bottles from the, uh, from the landfill, which the town has been letting us do for a number of years now, and that money goes into food. The other trailer that's there goes to the food bank and it setups so that the, uh, the lifts at the food bank, rather than handling one box at a time for half a ton of food, it just sets it in the trailer. And those are the, uh, two things that, uh, are there. The golf cart is operated to clean the, for bid to keep the town, center of the town cleaned and that's been about six years that's been used. So that's parked there, uh, close to the trailers and the batteries are charged there each night. But the pails, we could get rid of. The snowplow, I'll find another place to put it, uh, somewhere. I guess I could take it to my house. Put it in my garage. And then, I, I think that, and then plant the trees, I think the trees is the better. As far as the staff is concerned, they're the ones responsible for, uh, we run a behavior-based shelter. We don't run a shelter that, that, uh, people can, uh, our shelter can, they can commit drunk or on drugs, they have to behave themselves. We do have, uh, there's only one other shelter in Western Mass that's behavior-based. And, uh, I have to go before the state every three years to override, uh, the permit issue, cause the church is not fully sprinkled, only the places that the people sleep and, and are using. So Rob has to, uh, turn my application down when we apply for the shelter and then that goes down to, uh, Boston.
I got, I'm gonna mute it, but we could just, yeah, stick to the, yeah.
Um, uh, so, uh, for me, the issue is mostly the pails. Uh, I don't have a problem at all seeing the, the trailers and the bid cart. Even, even the snowplow is not damaging a problem, except that it has cones around it, which is kind of trashy, but that's, you know, I don't think that. So, so if, if, if the pails were gone and, and the snowplow was moved, you know, next to a building or something instead of having cones around it, in, in, like in the middle of the yard, that is solving the problem for me.
We would have no trouble in moving the pails and the cones.
Yeah.
Instead of a ton of bushes?
Yeah.
I was just gonna suggest maybe a compromise, just some evergreen bushes that are seen, but people can't hide within, so it's.
In pots or in the ground?
I guess so specific.
It would be in the ground as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's in pots, you get to water them and take care of them a lot more.
So I worry about trees, you just see through trucks anyways, it's like, I mean, this, you know.
So it's my, my concern would be that once something goes in the ground and grows, then it becomes permanent. So this has always been seen as a temporary. And the, and I was just reading through the conditions where you.
Well, the church is still working on, uh, we get to add on, we gotta add something on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the question is why? And, uh, uh, the trailer then, anything that we've drawn up has included, uh, a private place for the shelter within the church building. So the shelter, the trailer would be gone and all that stuff you're concerned about would disappear. Hopefully with three, three years or so.
So I'd be okay with like arrebatie, I just wanna, I don't know where the map went that Chris did.
I think this is.
You know, I, I just would wanna identify what section, I, I think it needs to be one or two, I think it needs to be a little run of arrebatie. And just the other thing to consider, this isn't. Yeah, just where the, you know, we facilitate where we would want to put the, um, bushes. And just one thing to remember, like, is, um, what's been said is this, this whole lot and what's going on is sort of in flux and there are plans. If five years from now, it still could be like this or it could be something different. And I think we have to remember that the abutter right now is a parking lot, so that's a low level of like caring in a way. But in a few short years, there could be a, a P three development of, of various natures and suddenly they would care. So my thinking is this, is this, it is maybe temporary, but is this our one shot of like making this area look neat and tidy so that there isn't a problem down the road?
Are you going to decide the fence of bushes or?
I mean, uh, you know, I don't wanna put them to undue expense, you know, why I thought a wooden stockade would work is because maybe they could get a good price or donation. I know they work with some developers who might be able to help them, you know, it's like thirty bucks a run or something. And he does have great labor who could probably dig the holes and put the fence in, so that would save them money.
That's a bit arrebatie, yeah.
And then I do understand the safety part, but I think, and I don't know if this would have to be a part of it, I know we're into the downcast lighting, that's very important, but in something where you do make a fence, you might want a spotlight that is motion, you know, sensitive that lights up in that area, but.
The other thing that would be, is that, that might be there is. The other thing that would be, that, that might be there is you had, from two years ago, you had a look scene two years. And it might be that this comes back to the board again in a three-year period, uh, in which it would come, come up with a site visit again. That wouldn't be opposed to that.
It's hard to put it, you can't really put a condition on this kind of thing that you're doing now because there's no document that's going to come out of it other than minutes of a meeting and maybe an email or a letter. So you can't put a condition on, on something like this, only on a decision.
I see.
How did you do it this time?
It was on the decision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How do we move forward? Pails, pills and cones, over lady, stockade fence, nothing.
I'd be willing to say fence or, for the line that has been drawn, either fence or, um, over lady or however you can put it.
I, I don't want to muddy anything, but in the, as I understand it, I mean, this isn't, that the, the condition that was put on the previous site plan decision was that a landscape plan would be submitted and one hasn't been. And, and that's what we're talking about here. It seems to me, being a layman, like a person. And so I think for the purpose of, you know, instead of spinning wheels, if, if we could, I would, I would think that we would be better informed if an actual landscape plan was submitted to us by the, in, by before March. So we could see what proposed types of, whatever screen is. And so that we don't have, so that it's just clear.
Good, good thinking.
So moved, so that's my motion.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, raise your hand. You did this. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Gates, do you want to keep this?
Or if there are any season sales now that are going on that you're more, you can take advantage of, then they're just by the next one or something.
But it would be, uh, buy a holiday tree and then donate it to.
A loving sister.
Yeah. There's a voice guy involved. So I think we was back. Well, let's just finish up section four. Are there any topics now reasonably anticipated for old business? I'm gonna take us back to, um, item two, planning and zoning. Is there any subcommittee for it?
Uh, so we are, we are proceeding with our, our plans. Some may have, uh, some issues to present to the council. We're making progress. Our, our latest thinking is that we will, our executive summary, so to speak, will be a focus on the, on downtown issues. Form-based code, parking, um, those sorts of things. Things that have come up in the council campaign often. And so we're aware that people are, are, are thinking about them and that the council is likely to want to start talking about them sooner than later. So, so that's, that's our, our thought is that, is that we will have, something along those lines is sort of an executive summary. And, but we are also, um, informed tonight that the, the committee that is working on aligning, uh, the old charter with the new charter or, or town bylaws or, or, um, various general models and so on, aligning those with the charter. They have, that committee has come up with a list of, of specific items to be changed in the zoning bylaw. And I probably am not going to say this correctly, but basically, the question is whether, whether there needs to be a public hearing by the planning board ASAP or, or, um, or if it, if directive has to come from the council, which is not going to see it, to planning board to, to hold a public hearing. So we are, we are, we are tentatively thinking about having a public hearing at the end of the month or planning board can be, uh, achieved.
End of the month is the one.
Remember, so that we can present a, uh, set of amendments that have had a public hearings and the council can immediately accept them.
And I haven't seen the list, but I know that there was just off the top of my head. There are such fun things as the size of the planning board, which is specified as nine. And there's also the requirement for a site plan review approval, which is six, which is also specified. So I'm sure these are all outlined in the.
I don't remember that specifically. The other things that are in there are references, references to, uh, select.
Yeah, but there's something weird on the, um, you said that two-thirds of the planning board are no more than, no less than five.
Is that what Chris clarified this afternoon?
That is in the rules and regs, the thing that you're referring to.
Rules and regs, okay.
But I did get in touch with Joel Bard today and, um, he's confirmed that for a special permit, um, the planning board, a group of seven planning board members would need to have five members voting the affirmative for a special permit.
Right, and then there was something that was more specific of the, I guess it's in the rules and regs.
The rules and regs talks about that too. So rules and regs will have to change when the planning board shrinks and this new, um, way of governing comes into effect.
So what do we do on the end between? So the planning board on its own can change the rules and when there's, that's not a, we have to hold a public hearing, but we can, so we, if we're at the end of November, we should have a change to the regs, which have not been the purview of this group, right? Because there are only looking at bylaws.
I don't think we, I think that would be a task, um, which is a challenge, to do that by the end of November. But I think you could do it by, say, the first week in December if you wanted to do it by December 5th.
Yeah.
Oh, but.
Yeah, because we're gonna have a really weird period where we're a seven-person board. This came up with a forum issue also, remember when we're supposed to, yeah, whatever. Okay, so let's, I'm sorry, could you take us, yeah, Greg?
So, I'm sorry, before I'm going to get this, I think there were two action items for the planning board that came out of the zoning subcommittee. The first is to determine if the board is able to meet on the 28th and the case that town council recommends we do so and hold a public hearing about this item rather than describing, so.
That's a Wednesday?
Yes.
So this is in my last planning board meeting that after, if we.
Wednesday after Thanksgiving.
We're just, yeah, again, the term here is a possibility. And I am available.
Who's not available on the 28th?
Who's not available?
And so really, Christine is the only person who's available.
And then the other item, you probably speak some more.
Right, so, um, one of the specific items that has been, um, oh, I don't know if I might, you're just too confusing. One of the specific items that has been identified is, um, is a change to section eight, four, two in zoning bylaw, which is about conforming temporary signs. And the, the action item that the committee has identified is, the committee has updated, the committee updated the reference to the sign making issue in the new bylaws or the new bylaw. Committee also replaces select board's authority to regulate signs that ascend six inches or more over the public authority with the town manager, man, with the town manager's authority. But the committee also believe this authority could last with the board of license commissioners for the town council itself. And I, um, I, I think personally and, you know, there are arguments against it, that, um, replacing, uh, an appointed authority, or an elected authority, select board's authority to regulate signs that ascend six inches or more with an appointed authority to town manager seems like, um, some, this much substance, but some, more substance. And I would prefer to recommend that, that it would be replaced with the council's authority. It's also a law. Now, the argument against it is that, um, in either case, it's an executive authority. Select board acts as an executive when they make that authority, when they make that decision. And the town manager would also be acting in executive authority.
So here's the point, that it's like, yeah, you just hit right on the head that the select board was hybrid, it was both executive and legislative. Because it was legislated because it was part of town meeting and it was, well, it is. So select board was, um, elected by the town, but they served both as executive and then as legislative. And so whether or not they intended this was a legislative or an executive, to me it sounds executive, but is that our rule or is that, yeah?
So, so my, I would just, um, if this is advertised or, or posted on an agenda, um, I would not want to represent it as these are just.
No, they're not, yeah, these are more existential or, yeah.
I would want to call out that this is, this is making a change that, that, that changes authority from one kind of, it's completely not a kind of, so it should be clear to the public that.
So I totally agree with that.
Whereas most of these other ones are not really.
And just wondering if we should punt that to the new town council. Yeah, okay.
Well, I guess under further clarified, you know, Rob requested of Jeff Kravitz that the committee make that change and Jeff wanted to hear the opinion of the full planning board on that before.
On this particular issue?
Yes.
To me it sounds executive, but.
Well, so in the current world, the select board is in charge of the right of way. In the new world, the town council will be in charge of the right of way. So in, it makes sense to have it be the town council who's in charge of determining where their sign can hang over into the right of way by six inches. And then if the town council determines that it's cluttering up their schedule and they don't want to deal with this anymore, they can, um, transfer the authority to the, um, town manager. That's what I think.
I, I agree with that philosophy, yeah. So things that are ambiguous, I would think would go to the town council for disposal. So they could choose to delegate authority. I, I'm speaking about my papers for sure. But most of the others really had to do with something like.
Yeah, so, so first one is the committee replace, would replace town's authority to amend the zoning that with town council.
Yeah, those are obvious ones.
Yeah.
So wherever it's, town meeting was unadversitively always legislative. Yeah.
Um, there's another one that they have on the list that also is not just, uh, clarifying, it's, it's, it's to change zoning bylaw, um, section seven, one, zero, six, entry and exit driveways to conform with the state fire code. That is something that, um, we have, we have in other cases had to change the bylaw to conform with state law. And we had to hold a public hearing for that issue at the town meeting. And it was, you know, we called it, um, technical fixes or, or housekeeping, whatever. That's, that's, um, I think that should also be called out as something that is, you know, we're changing language.
They're not making a change.
Oh, they're not making a change?
They were just brought to their attention.
Oh, right, okay, yeah, okay, yeah. Let me show you the change. But another, I guess, is that part of the motion.
Do you want to take a vote on whether that, um, the language of eight point four two with regard to the permitting signs should be changed in this, um, recommendation to town council?
Sound good.
Second.
Oh, that was okay. So a motion second discussion.
What are we looking at?
Sorry, I didn't pay the copy so I can't find the copy.
You're kind of lost here.
I'm lost in the weeds too.
So this has to do with the zoning bylaw, that as we move to a new form of government, these are the parts that this committee has.
I don't understand, so what, what do we change?
Eight point four two, um, which gives authority to now to the select board to approve signs that overhang more than six inches into the public right of way. So really the two choices are delegate that authority to the executive branch, which is the town manager, or delegate it to the town council, which is the legislative branch. Because it's not clear in this case.
Who has it now?
Select board, but the select board is this weird hybrid thing. Whereas both an executive, it has both executive authority and it has legislative authority by being part of town meeting.
So will the town council?
No, town council's not an executive. It's strictly legislative for sure.
And so the question is whether this, whether eight point four two should be revised to be the, the oversight for the sign extending into the public right of way should be under the town council?
Yeah. Or the town manager.
The town manager. And it makes sense to me just that, that the town council's.
I would agree. Because then the town council can then also has authority to change that. Yeah, I think we should do that. But that was a motion, right?
So, so thanks for allowing me to catch up to speed. You know, you know, so I agree with you.
All favor, raise your hand.
All right. Unfortunately, that wasn't the vote to change it.
And the, the determination about the meeting is if you need to hold a public meeting in November eighth, 28th, you're all available except for Ms. Graham.
Are we also meeting the 21st?
No, it's Thanksgiving. The night before Thanksgiving.
Oh, good.
Yes, we are. We should be, we should be out by 10.
Again, I, I apologize because I think I was lost. The purpose of the November, the proposed November 28th meeting is to approve conforming language, to amend the zoning bylaw?
It's to hold that open in case town council says we need to hold a public hearing against the planning board.
Uh, in order to.
Town attorney, town attorney, yeah, all right.
In order to approve, in order to approve zoning bylaw revisions.
Yes.
Got it, okay.
So there's one other little glitch, which is that when, um, town meeting approved all those, the new definitions in the, under the marijuana uses bylaw, we failed to say at the bottom and renumber all the subsequent definitions. So, um, technically speaking, uh, we have to come back to the planning board to hold a public hearing to renumber all of those subsequent definitions. And then we go to the town clerk and say the town, uh, planning board held a public hearing and they agreed and so this goes through. So we may try to roll that into this meeting on November 28th if we can figure out a way to do it.
So, so we don't have the authority to change the zoning bylaw. So we're gonna hold this public hearing and we'll make a recommendation to the new town council, which is convened five days later.
Yeah.
And then they can do with it what they want.
Yeah.
Wasn't, what, didn't town meeting pass something about non-substantive changes?
They did.
That would allow this to be done without a meeting?
No, we still need a public hearing and planning board.
It's, instead of going to town meeting to change all the numbering, we go to the planning board to hold a public hearing.
Got it, yes.
They, they, that, and then the town clerk can do this.
Town clerk can do all this?
The non-substantive changes, but not these changes that are being proposed. It's has to be done by town council.
Okay, tell.
Town, so CIL.
Yeah. Okay. Yes. Okay, so we're gonna meet November 28th, but first we need to get an opinion with, let's.
Yes, we're getting an opinion tomorrow.
So we, well, we need it needed.
And this will be the only thing on the agenda, yes?
There's two things.
No, six, seven?
Rose and no.
Okay. More, okay. Public comment. So thank you for keeping the, keeping the vault forward. Uh, new business topics that reasonably anticipated? A, A and R?
Yes.
I see what.
An A and R, yeah. Let me explain. Um, so this is a piece of property at the corner of, um, Redwood Drive and East Pleasant Street. And what do I pass it to, Perry, and then I pass it down.
Is that Joe, is that Joe Mesteca? Is that Jo, is that Jo Mesteca?
It is Jennifer Polly, Polly Rilla.
Okay, so, Jennifer's.
Who owns this property. And someone is proposing to purchase it. And what the purchaser would like to do is to divide the property in two. And there's enough lot area and frontage to do this. And they're going to buy the property in two and build a house on the lot that's been created.
Yeah. Sounds like a good plan.
That's on the north side?
East.
East side.
On the east side of East Pleasant Street and the south side of Grantwood Drive.
South side of Grantwood Drive.
South side of Grantwood Drive. I had to get my north, south, east, west figured out, yes.
South side of Grantwood Drive.
Yes.
Right on the corner?
Yeah.
It's sort of double sided. They have like a farm stand here, like a set back, like a little farm stand.
Yeah, I'm trying to picture, I thought I knew, I guess I don't know that corner as well as I believe.
Okay, do you authorize Mr. Striker to sign this, endorse this plan?
Thumbs up. Can I just see a box?
I understand proposing something, uh, in the data, in terms of architecture, so.
Okay, onward, upcoming ZDA?
The only upcoming ZDA one that I know about is, I think I've told you about this before. McChee's building is being transformed into another brick oven pizza restaurant called Porta. And so, that's coming before the ZDA sometime soon.
Looks like the ready building. They have the lights there.
They jumped the gun a little.
Did they, did they go to TRD for all the buildings?
Yeah, so they jumped the gun on that too.
They're very eager.
They're gun jumpers.
This is an hour.
And the colors for those at TRD?
They had the colors out before they came to the TRD.
But that's your purview, right? Your colors?
Well, we approved what was on the paper, which were the same colors as they already had, as they already had up. What are you going to do?
They're from New Jersey.
Yeah, yeah.
Say your, roll the jack.
I'm from New Jersey.
Good cap. I met the two guys in the parking lot a couple months ago. Upcoming SPP, SPR, S U D?
236 North Pleasant Street is coming back. The office building across from Wendy's Pleasant. So, they're just renewing their permits that they have.
And what about McChee's building on Northeast Street, Southeast Street?
East Pleasant Street?
No, the one down by Auto Express.
Yes, oh, so that's coming too. I mean, that will come eventually. It's gone through the Conservation Commission. It's Amir McChee's building right across from Cumberland Farms on Southeast Street and right next to the flood savings bank, yeah. So, he's proposing a three-story, I think, McChee's building there, which I believe he's got 68 apartments and some retail space on the ground floor.
But not by November 28th?
Not by November 28th.
Just checking. Planning board committee and liaison representatives, P D P S. Community Preservation Act, so we need to actually talk about this.
You do, you need to.
But how do we talk about this?
You need to nominate someone who's going to still be around after December.
Because we don't know who those are.
So, I had a conversation with the town manager today. And the way I think it's going to work, and we seem to agree, is that all the people who are moving forward past 2018 will still be on the board.
So, that's a total of time.
Yeah, unless the town council chooses to replace them. But probably not, so they'll be moved forward. There are four members of the planning board whose terms expired in June. They're going to extend to the end of December. And so, I would say you shouldn't probably choose from among the four who, whose terms will end at the end of December, because I don't know what's going to happen with them. But you should choose from the other five we left. And I think Perry was the liaison to CPAD previously, and she said she's not able to serve in that role anymore. So.
So, one solution would be to forget her request, in other words, so she can serve until she, no.
I'm sorry. It's very demanding.
Okay, okay.
It is very demanding?
But, I mean, it has periods where I've been meeting every week or every two weeks. And it's very long, and I really can't take.
It's a short time, you're.
Yeah, so they have, I don't remember exactly, but there are two, twice a year, they have like a series of proposals that come in, so you have to read all the proposals, sit through the presentations and questions, and then eventually have meetings. They're actually a lot of fun. I really enjoy doing that. It's a great committee to be on, but it's really time-consuming and especially.
And then, when I said forget your request, what I meant is to, because if there's no work right now.
There is.
Oh, there is, okay. I was going to say that we can settle this until, yeah, okay.
I was just going to say about the busy times of year. It's my understanding, December through February, March roughly.
But sometimes you start meeting, like, sometimes you have to prepare. So, there was a time where we actually worked on the draft of the proposal very intensely for like a few months in a row. So, it depends, right now, the proposal, like, the draft is done, but usually there's a time for questions and answers, and then you actually assess the proposal. So, for every, like, for the twice-a-year event, there are like different blocks of time.
And I don't mean to, so I'm going to go off the planning board. So, we'll be down to eight on December, whatever it is.
December 3rd, yeah.
December 3rd.
So, but.
And we don't, yeah.
Read other planning board members whose term expires then. Mr. Jemcik, Mr. Crowner, and Mr. Riati. So, one of them will need to not be on the planning board anymore after December 3rd.
But the other two can apply to the.
The other two can apply to stay or can stay through December.
Until, are you, until?
And then, the practice has been that people stay on the board until they're replaced. So, I think, you know, we can count on being good through December. Things may need to be clarified after that.
But the two people that had expressed an interest, one was Rob, and the other one was, who was the other one?
I just had a question of why they need more details.
So, you had not specifically put your, because I hate to load the five that we know are staying up with more things if they haven't expressed an interest.
So, I did find out that they don't want them to meet. They will meet whenever is appropriate, given the number of people who are there and their schedules. So, they're going to have to come together and work it out.
Is that usually a day thing or a night thing?
It's usually at night, but as an example, up until the last round, it was extremely inclusive. And the last round, it wasn't, so it was, so I had to work around everybody's schedule, and it was very difficult. But usually, the practice in the previous years is that they check with everyone and make sure that everyone can do it. And then they convene, like, it's usually at night, it's around 6:00 or 7:00 also, occasionally at 5:00, yeah.
I'd be willing to take that on, I think, if no one else feels they have the time for it.
You're going to continue?
I think I am, am I not, Chris?
Yes. So, you would need to, someone would need to nominate Mr. Burt Whistleman.
Well, let's see it, yeah. Let's see if.
Chris, did you want to, did you want to take that on too?
Well, I know Rob volunteered first, but you're one of the ones in the.
No. In the what?
In the Bob Armup.
In the what?
So, do, not get, so, are we waiting to find out? Like, so, since Rob first expressed interest, can we just take it as till we know if he's staying?
Well, here's the other dilemma, is that the select board can't make appointments. They don't have the authority to make appointments. So, what we decide doesn't really matter, because.
Well, then, town council could make an appointment the 1st of December, and this group is starting to meet now, aren't they?
So, which is, yeah. But nothing, these are public meetings, so our rep could still go.
But, but it seems like if, if, if we need a planning board liaison, and if there's a name that comes forward to recommend to the town council for an easy disposition of that, of that action, that would be, that would seem to be, to be efficient.
Yeah.
So, you know, it sounds like Rob and Michael Armus or something.
So, why do we, I heard, and should the planning board be lucky enough to have, well, as a continuing member, maybe this could come up to you guys again? And, yeah, you know, with certain person's agreement. So, that's a nomination for Mr. Burt Whistle. Is there, there was a second? Oh, wow. So, that's almost by acclamation, so.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, why don't we just do it by acclamation, by unanimous acclamation? All right, objection? Is that even a thing?
By consensus, I can say that.
Yeah, by consensus, by unanimous consent.
You will soon have the power to make that, if it's our.
That's how it works, right?
I'm not entirely sure.
Objection, Your Honor.
I'm not entirely sure if the appointment is made by the select board, I mean, the town council or the town manager. Because the town manager does make a lot of things.
But he has to get ratified, okay, you're right.
Yeah, he may have to get approval.
But this is of the utmost urgent.
Yes, so I'll send that to him right away.
Agriculture Commission note report, TRB?
Yeah, we approved a bunch of signs in the last two meetings and sent one back for redesign, some, actually redesign, in terms of protecting the design integrity of downtown.
Excellent. I think so. Porta, yeah. Municipal of Forty, hello, Municipal of Affordable Housing Trust.
Trust held a forum, which I wasn't able to attend unfortunately at the end of October. We'll be meeting again tomorrow, and most of the work has been focused on design proposals for East Street School property. So, the forum was revisiting kind of a design discussion that we had with Cune Riddle, where they presented some options. And so, we'll be meeting tomorrow, we'll be looking further at those options and possibly making a recommendation on design criteria for our.
And I saw your, I looked at the photos, and I saw you were there.
I definitely wondered that, I'm not sure I ever been there.
Your photos, so.
Which is opposed to Rob getting along.
They must have, they must have been posting old photos, and, interesting. And was Bruce Carson there?
I don't know where I was.
They posted the.
There was a challenge, a good home.
Interesting. Somebody posted it, attended, it was actually a candidate, attended the Affordable Housing Trust. And they had your picture there.
Oh, maybe it was the transportation forum, because Bruce was there and I was there.
Okay, so they posted it under the wrong label? Yeah, how funny. Was that that one? Transportation one? Okay, wrong label then.
Greg, was there any kind of consensus that cannot affect the media, you know about?
Well, not that I'm aware of. I think that some of the larger questions that remain are whether to keep the existing East Street School building. And at the meeting that I did attend, which was just the trust and maybe 20 members of the public proceeding forum, there was more leaning towards keeping the school, in part because, to my surprise, that keeping the school actually would be more cost-effective. My sense is that generally refurbishing a building like that, especially that building that has a lot of hazardous materials in it, would be more expensive, but the cost estimates from Cune Riddle were actually lower to keep the building. And then, at the forum, I'm told that there was maybe a leaning towards not keeping the building because of concerns about it not being energy-efficient, it's an old brick building. So, conversation could be continued.
It sounds like a sort of fascinating project. And I'm really sorry that I didn't go to do it. Zoning Subcommittee, we've had that report, UTAC. So, one of the questions in the Springfield Republican to candidates was about the P3 project and UTAC's involvement. So, I don't think any of us answered that one correctly, but. So, have you been involved at all in the P3 discussion, no, zero?
UTAC hasn't, my Subcommittee Housing hasn't yet since, I think, we made?
Yeah.
For a month of the map.
So, that was much of it for what is the P3 project?
So, this was in the Gazette, so it's proposed 1,000-bed housing on the site. We were just, right next to what we were just talking about, this place. And it would have some retail, it would have 1,000 beds, a parking garage, sort of built into it. So, it's kind of a combination of three major uses. So, this is actually presented to the campus planning committee, the UMass Campus Planning Committee, last week. And actually, it'd be worthwhile to ask them to come give a presentation here. Because it's really obviously being driven by the university.
Are those 1,000 beds intended for students?
Yeah, it'd be only for students. But it wouldn't be creating 1,000 new beds. It would be only creating blank 100, like 800 or, because what they'll do is they'll use it as swing space and they can take students out of other dorms and renovate them. Downtown parking working group.
Been that today, and the town has awarded a consultant of the parking work. So, over the next week or two, I'm sure I'll be hearing about that.
There was something that came over the wires this afternoon from, you know, what? I did, I'm sorry, I didn't even get a chance to look at it, because I. We got a.
A nomination from the Subcommittee?
Was that from you guys?
Oh, about Mr. Christine, that?
That was a recommendation to the planning board, but mostly to the zoning Subcommittee, that while they were working on their work plan and prioritization of that, that they consider parking to a high degree. And we specified out for them to include the municipal parking district developer requirements and any other zoning that impacts parking.
Yeah, so I always wonder, and I know this is, going down the rabbit hole, is the right tool, zoning by law, or is there a different tool that should be, yeah, but just because, yeah.
A question on that came up, it was raised after me, Christine, about the timeframe for that consultant. And I had recalled that the consultant was going to be working pretty much on this issue about projecting implications of current development trends on parking. So, should we expect to see something related to the request from, from?
I don't think so. Well, so, the consultant thing is still sort of in process. We had hoped originally that they would be able to be hired and come on board by the end of September, if not the end of October. Obviously, they're lucky about, they'll be lucky to be the end of November. And part of the problem is they need to redo additional parking counts, like, they did it in 2016. But we need to have more done. And catching the proper window of that is pretty complicated, actually, because you want the students here. You have the holiday, like, we're about to do Saturday pre-parking, right? So, obviously, you wouldn't do counts then. So, that might push some of it to late January or February, which pushes everything off longer. So, if you guys are working on this now, we want you to be just considering that. And I would expect then, when the consultant comes on, it's about six months worth of work. You know, you may not actually get anything formally from them until this time, you know, late summer. So, and all, like I said, this isn't being worked right now.
Don't hold a breath.
Yeah, so if you guys are thinking about it, you know, just start, you know. Yeah, so if you guys are thinking about it, you know, just start, you know, tagging those things that impact that. I think we were especially stressing the municipal parking district overlay and, um, you know, develop, when there's development, what kind of, you know, whether it be fees and lieu or required parking space, whatever.
Steve, you mentioned a minute ago that maybe your zoning wasn't the way to go, what do you mean?
Yeah, um, so everyone focuses on the municipal parking district, so, and which I think is one of the most progressive... I don't remember where I was today that somebody was talking about this. Somebody was talking about this in the, in our design building, but in a way it's one of the most progressive parts of the zoning bylaw that we've done, so it's been around in part, since my understanding, since the sixties, when we were very car, cheap oil, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, Amherst at that time had the foresight to have this municipal parking district, which enabled, you know, the entire intent of that is to enable downtown to develop as a, um, downtown that was not basically a slave to the car. So there wasn't that, there hasn't been that much development since it was put in place, we know that it's been expanded, and we know that there was a lot of concern about, um, the impact of that now that, you know, basically there have been several new buildings built downtown. So I guess what my, my personal concern is that trying to pull back on that, what I find to be a very progressive part of our zoning bylaw in reaction to a perception of parking would be, for me, a step in the wrong direction, however, I think that a lot of the other things that were described, I guess those could be part of the zoning bylaw, like fees and lieu or whatever, they don't necessarily have to be, or a contribution towards, um, parking garage, whatever, those could be zoning bylaw, but they don't necessarily have to be. I, I don't know, that's, my concern is that we, you know, go back to, so somebody in our faculty who lives in Hadley was talking about the big problems with the Hadley Library slash Senior Center, where it may be scuttled, because they can't figure out how to, um, address the parking issue, which anyone that's ever been to Hadley is sort of a head slapping, it's like, don't they have, isn't it all that they have? Sorry. So, you know, so, it's a quandary, but I'm not sure that the zoning bylaw is the, the tool where this could settle, and I, I think I've...
Well, the reason I picked up on what you were saying is because it seems to me that there, there is such a clear zoning bylaw about parking in the municipal parking district, and at the moment.
At the moment, right.
So whatever, whatever needs to be done, needs to be done in the context of what, what's there now.
Yeah, but let's take, let's take the affordable housing, you know, as an example, so the affordable housing has been addressed through a number of different tools, the tax incentive being one that wasn't in the zoning bylaw, inclusionary zoning being one that was in the zoning bylaw, you know, et cetera, so I see that, and I'm speaking way out of school here, but I think that either the real or perceived parking issue is, there's a, a number of different tools, of which the zoning may be one, but everyone likes to, a lot of people like to focus on the municipal parking district as just make developers park on their, you know, just make the owners of the property provide parking, is a very sort of anti-downtown, anti, it's not a realistic solution for these very small parcels in downtown that don't have, you know, frankly, they don't have room for, even though they have surface parking now, but what's, if you imagine a downtown where there's, that's higher than that, parking doesn't work because... Yeah.
I just had an interesting experience going to Florence, I went to their, um, their forum on downtown Florence, this was last week or the week before, and they really have sort of the opposite problem that we have, they have buildings popping up here and there, but separated by seas of parking, so they actually have a load of parking, and probably too much parking for the uses that are there, so they often have these big empty parking lots, and they're trying to figure out what should they do, should they start doing infill in the places where they have parking?
Yeah.
And not have so many, have not have the requirement for so many parking spaces for whatever is going on there. So they were trying to wrestle with that issue, which I thought was interesting, because, you know, it's so different from what we listen to.
And we're at a period of some major shift, I don't know, I don't think anyone knows what it will be, like just the number of Ubers that you see now on the streets, so I, I call them, there's a new, there's a new phenomenon of the car stopped in the middle of the road, I don't know if you've come across this, but you see the car stopped in the middle of the road, and nine times out of ten, they're gonna have a little U on it, because they're, they're lost, or they're waiting for somebody, so you, so that's the phenomenon of Uber, but what that means is that there are not those cars parked in a parking lot, their cars are, you know, sort of in motion, put to work, which is kind of a great thing, right?
As long as they're not just circling the block waiting for their ride, which is.
Yeah, Uber, yeah, sometimes they do that, so, so we have a, we have a faculty member that doesn't have a car, and she relies almost completely on PVTA, PVTA and Uber to get around.
Yeah, curbside management is something that downtown parking work in purpose, because it ties in with the commercial parking we have, you know, we have two-minute, fifteen-minute parking, and can some of these all be combined?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And if you have, you need areas for cars to pull over, but then you might lose parking spots, and there's a balance. But just on the zoning thing, I just wanna say, you know, it's bigger picture, I'm not saying, you know, whether it be public or private or combo, if there's parking garages or parking built into buildings, we still have issues in the BL, I believe, for, you know, and that was always hanging out there, so when I was, you know, I didn't spell that out, but, you know, that's something that we're also, like, if you're rethinking, going back to that BL thing, you know, consider parking in it.
Does that help extend?
Sure, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a big, big discussion, I'm just curious what, what your, um, specific point was relative to not being a zoning issue.
That was it, that there was other tools that might.
I'm sure, yeah.
I just, um, reported the chair, so I was gonna say, this is my last meeting and how great it's been working with all of you guys, but... It's asking November twenty-eighth. But anyway, that, that is, if this is our last meeting, it's been a complete honor to be part of this board for almost ten years, so I'm gonna start crying. So I think I'll leave it, actually, there was one more thing, um, which is, I had said that we could discuss the planning board dinner after the election, thinking that I would have plenty of time.
I don't have to do my own time, so.
Yeah, right, exactly, but I'm still up for it, if there's a time that works, and we're approaching Thanksgiving, so, one option would be... Yeah, should we, um, yeah.
We should do it later in the year and invite you.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
You can also, you know, get together, that doesn't mean like a, a house and a potluck and everything, like when Jonathan Tucker had the department, I know people got together at Pizza sixty-three, so maybe there's some.
Yeah, that's actually a great idea. No, that's a great idea, I mean, I'd love to do that, it's just, um, yeah, if.
I'm gonna build a new kitchen as of sometime next spring, so maybe we'll have some friends to go.
But yeah, so if you guys have a dinner, please invite me.
We will, thank you.
And I, well, I have to, let me say one more thing that, um, because I did run for town council, although a lot of the discussions that I was part of had to do with planning things, and, you know, sort of, um, explaining what this, you know, this body and the bodies before had done. You know, you guys are great, it's just been, um, you know, a real pleasure to work on all kinds of, you know, it's, it's been a great experience.
I'm really glad that you'll be able to represent the planning board well on the town council and explain things to them, because I think a lot of them don't really understand a lot of what we do.
Yeah, and I was, you know, there are two other former planning board members who were in the pool, Aaron, Aiden, and Paul Grabowski, but I'm the last one standing, so, go planning board.